And then. Right. Well, welcome to this call. What we have done here is set up our first first demo. Some of the work that has been done in NGS, NGI Esaf Labs. And we're excited to describe what we have done and this project. Basically, there are three projects that have been involved. One with I grant an automated data agreements. Collaborating with then I'll take which I'm representing, working with standards interoperability lead. Together also with privacy and which has a privacy program tools and perform. BPI reports and we're going to show the connection there. And we have another project from got to get very fable universal interface. Where they've integrated the data agreement in the process of creating proofs. And we also have human colossus with the overlays capture architecture. So all three projects have developed a data agreement. Which is based from the standards originally it worked started with can Terra. They've created a schema and. Work has progressed and adopted from ISO, there is work in twenty seven five sixty. It's currently in working draft. And what we're doing is a preview of what will be coming, but as well as work that has been done in can Terra. So what is a data agreement? It's an immutable record of consent for processing of personal information. What we've done is. And tying to SSI or DLT is that when you're exchanging information. You're creating a record of that exchange. So similar to going to a store, you buy a purchase a product. And you're using it, you're getting a receipt. Here, when you do it, use a digital service. You're actually getting a receipt of the what are they providing with service and purpose? And what this does allows for an individual to be able to control more closely. How they want to restrict how they want to share their data. Possibly they don't want to go outside of their jurisdiction, or possibly they don't want their data to be stored outside of their location. And I'm gonna go briefly through the what is this data agreement? So just describing some key points. There is a a purpose in this record. Which indicates, for example, this is for purpose of health test verification. You may indicate the storage location. And duration that you're going to keep that information. As well as you're indicating the jurisdiction. And you'll see also there is a indication of the lawful basis. We can indicate consent and all the other lawful basis for processing data. We also see a potential going forward as the EU is setting up GDPR certification. That this receipt can also indicate there has been a certification performed and you can refer to it. As well as performance of an assessment. So understanding the risks of sharing the data. You can easily make a highlight and say, okay, these are the risks that have been identified and you can. Share it with individual if they show so choose. And also, we're handling the personal data. Will list of all the personal data and if they're flagged for sensitivity. Also indicate what are the third parties that might be involved with sharing further down after the data controller. And also, we're getting a sign off, and this is where we're signing a presentation of a notice. And signing possibly a consent. So once you agree with sharing the data. Then you get that a immutable record of a consent where the data subject has signed. And also, further down the road, we can see the potential of adding. How do you invoke your privacy rights? For example, if I want to withdraw, erase or or. Or access my data, how do I perform that? You might have a link to that information. So this is a introduction of the data agreement. I'm gonna now go into the three demos. First, we're gonna get the privacy I grant I O together with the privacy ant. And we're going to demonstrate in this how DPIA is assisting in creating the data agreement. Then after I grant the privacy and we'll have get the cam. And then then we're gonna have human colossus and at the end, we're gonna do a. Next step and after we're done, then we can open up for questions and Q and A. So I'm gonna hand over to Lau if you want to continue.
Thank you. So to give you a little bit of a background to what this whole project is about. This project is called automated data agreements where we develop the concept of data agreement. As part of India, it's the flab initiative. As Yan pointed out, a data agreement is for a common conditions for an organization. To process personal data in accordance with regulations such as a GDPR. We have produced a bunch of artifacts as part of this project that includes a a working solution. Including the specifications around data agreement. Proposing a a did method called it by data as well as implementing. A data agreement using did come protocol. We as part of the project, we also. Is the and that is a work in progress where we are extending the concept of data given towards delegated consent and economic hour. Next page, Yan. So for any data agreement to be created and and to have the receipt as you have pointed out, it undergoes a number of steps. The very top part, Yan, if you could click click the slide. The very top part is where the the four different faces that are typical in a data game lifecycle is depicted. Starting with definition preparation, capture and proof. The definition and preparation is pretty much the the role that performs it is the organization itself while the catchers towards individual. And the proof can be anybody including a independent third party auditor. Okay, I think. Do you want to take away from here? Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I can describe the the first two steps. So from a definition, we're gonna be looking at the the privacy at. Where very shortly where we're going to demonstrate how we're creating definition of the content of a data agreement. And. And from there, we're going to be able to help with preparation. That would be helping with the automation of creating the. Data agreement that shall be registered with. When you're applying the did method to signing between the a controller and the data subject. Do you want to take care or shall I keep going?
Yeah. Then we have the capture where the individual is presented with the dead agreement. And the individual signs off or reject. So a different different. Options are provided. And finally, the last one is the proof where. Any independent auditor or anybody else can verify the authenticity of the data limit itself. So this is to show a very quick overview of the the component architecture. It's typically follows any Microsoft's architecture. As you can see, there are certain components that are like the core components and then there are certain things which are very much pluggable. So we are not really tied to any particular implementation in a way. It is very much extensible, all the code base that you know, and the concepts are very much reusable in any system. Doesn't need to be typically be a did base system in a way. Next. Yeah, these are the these are just for the documentation for your information. So we have a we have prepared, we have produced a bunch of artifacts, including the APIs and specifications. Then we have publish a white paper on the whole idea for sustainable data exchange with data agreements. We'll be soon publishing another white paper. Which is about about extending data agreements for delegation. And we have on the right side, we have a bunch of source code that are all Apache two dot zero licensed. And the commercial implementations essentially privacy and was the DPA told us Yan will be demonstrating. And of course, in I grant both in our verification services that is a grand enterprise dashboard. As well as in our data wallet, we we have it functional today. Over to Yan.
Okay, so now it's demo time. So I'm gonna give an introduction to the tool from privacy and. It's an online tool where you can apply your privacy program within a company. That means you can look at all your privacy and security compliance and twenty seven thousand series compliance. And you can add the controls and perform your risk assessment through this tool. So what I'm gonna start is by demonstrating that we're created a project. The demo will be looking at the a travel agent for an airline. Which will get the data from a I grant I O wallet. And the information will be coming from a test center that has collected. Data and has you have previously shared it to this wallet through another interaction, another. Purpose, we're focusing on one purpose is the communication with the travel agent. You can see through the tool, what are the data points that are being shared? It'll be a beneficiary name vaccination dosage and vaccination data. And you'll see there's a classification of a category. We're also trying to use the W three CDPV for this vocabulary. So it's standardized. So all of the implementations you'll see together today will try to be following those. And the advantage of having these tools, you can easily track where is the storage information? In this case, it's indicated as Sweden. You can also be monitoring how is a transfer. Let's say across you or other countries are there trans border agreements? This gives you from a company, an overview of how the information might be. And transferred plus you have the any privacy program, you're looking at what activities need to be in place and the progress. To mitigate any of the risks that are being identified. But the purpose of this demo is not to show this part, but how do we create these data agreements? So if I go into a. The purpose here, I'm gonna be assigning a this diff demo receive. Receiving of credentials. Where we give a description for verify individuals COVID test. The industry group or service is a healthcare. We're seeing that legal basis or lawful basis of processing is based on consent. The retention time is seven days. And who who is the contact for that information? And you can see through the inventory, what is the data that's being used? And when we have said all this information, we're able to export. For demonstration purpose, we're showing here the integration with the I grant site is done through an API. And here you'll see that information in the schema that I originally started describing. Where you have who is their controller, the jurisdiction, policy, retention period. Are there any geographic restrictions, purpose and your three purposes? And here you can see the categories and the sensitivity. And that's the information that's then ready for allow to demonstrate on how I grant them is collecting this information. I'm gonna stop presenting so that you can. Take over.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, are you ready?
Yeah, absolutely. So I I hope you can see my screen, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so essentially, the on my right side of the screen is is the I grant enterprise dashboard. Which is a verification configurator tooling. And then on the left side is the data wallet again from I grant. So of course, you know, what I'm going to do is to really. Fresh the data agreement that has been generated for sake of simplicity, we just use the input function. And I've already copied up the JSON that Yan Yan has actually exported basically. And I'm able to immediately once exported, I I I'm able to actually save it. Market as to point. Lido and I'm able to save it in as a new data agreement. And what happens in the background is essentially this data agreement is getting converted into so this this lift them or receiving credentials converted into. A verification service. In this case, it's a it's a verifier or a data using service that actually. In this case, it's the travel travel companies say data using service. So if I go to the self sovereign identification. I should be able to see a corresponding entry soon, hopefully soon. Yeah, I can see this if demo receive over credentials. One one dot two to zero, and then I'm able to actually, you know, generate a QR code. That represents. All that that is used to collect a bunch of information from an individual. So in this case, what I'm going to do is to really scan this QR code. So on the left side, I have my mobile phone, which for the sake of simplicity. I already have my COVID certificates, which is which is pretty much what the. Data this QR code is requesting or the data that the airline company is requesting. So I I click the shared data and scan the QR code that is presented to me by the airline company. And the data element is appearing. So let me unhide this privacy button on the very top. Right, so you can see that there are, you know, I I have two data games that are present in the in my wallet. So an option to really choose which one of those. So because obviously I choose the. The the latest of my second dosage vaccination proof. And all the data and policies also can easily be seen. And these are these are the bunch of things that that is configured. By by the privacy and DPA tooling process, basically. So once I conform to the data agreement, I'm basically signing the agreement in practice. And the data get trans trans data get exchanged to the travel company. So if I now go to the to the to the data history, I should be able to see a verification stream over here. That of course provides me with information about information. The travel company get information about my COVID vaccination details.
That's this is and that's actually using COVID data. This is an actual.
This is a real data, yes.
That's the COVID certificate that was scanned in. And stored on the wallet as to do the verification.
So back to you. Yeah.
Great, it's up to get the can now. Do you are you ready to share a screen?
Yeah, sure. Let me, okay. Wait, oh, it's a second. Oh, I have to start Chrome. Just a second.
No sweat. Shall I run some background music now while we wait in suspense for the next demo? Who said you want maybe more time and then Paul goes first?
The sound of. I'm not sort of at first this problem, but if it takes more than thirty seconds, I would suggest to switch to Paul.
Okay, we'll do. And while we wait, Juan, your icon, is it actually a pet of yours or you just found it on the internet?
Yeah, it's just a meme. I don't even remember where I found it. I think it was an advertisement, actually.
I get an NFT for it.
The big little the big little big Lebowski animal. Nice, nice, nice marmot, man.
So Jose, are you ready or shall we move? Or you need more time? So Paul can.
Because I just had to close Chrome, so everything I had prepared for the demo just.
Okay, let's let's go for Paul. Paul, are you ready to? To go through? Paul?
Sorry, mute. Yes, I'm good to go. Yeah, awesome. Share this. Yeah, all right. So hopefully you can all see my screen. Great, cool. So so this is a really about the resolution of the data agreement forms. So multi language data agreement form is using OCA. It's an interoperable data capture solution for for these agreements. Actually, bear with me, I'm just gonna to get rid of all of your lovely faces because you're. In the way of my thing. So yeah, OCA for overlays capture architecture. Many of you on the call will already know this architecture. So I won't go into in much much detail. All I'll say here is that it OCA presents a schema as a multi dimensional object. Consisting of a stable scheme of capture base. Sorry, we just changed the name recently from schema base to capture base. And interoperable overlays. So you can so basically every any task that happens within a schema. Any different task is held with its with its own unique overlay. And then that's cryptographically linked to the capture base. So overlays are task oriented linked data objects that provide additional coloration to the capture base. And so in this demo that I'm going to show you, you'll see a data agreement there on on the left. And I'll show you the proper resolved version of that in a minute. But basically for multi language, there's a few overlays that are basically. Coming into the stack and and changing the language. So the first one's a meta overlay. So meta overlay is a core linked object that defines contextual metadata. About the schema, including the schema name and the description and broad classification schemes. So initially, we had this in the capture base, but then when we were changing language, it wasn't resolving. So this this allows you to change the form name into any language. There's an entry overlay. So you'll see there on the left, the scroll down there has predefined entries. Again, that can be done in multiple languages. An entry overlay is a core linked object that defines predefined field values in a specified language. It's good practice to avoid implementing free form text fields to minimize the risk capturing unforeseen PII and QII information or sensitive information. So this overlay type enables structured data to be entered, thereby negating the risk of capturing and storing and subsequently storing dangerous data. A label overlay again, so so the label overlay is for category labels and also attribute labels. So a label overlay is a core linked object that defines attribute and category labels for a specific locale. This overlay type enables all labels to be displayed in a preferred language at the presentation layer for better comprehensibility to the end user. And finally, is an information overlay. So this is really defines instructional or informational or legal prose to assist the data entry process. So you know, on your mobile phone, when you have to enter in information, you have like the eye icon. That eye icon is like the information for giving you data entry hints. So those are the overlays that you'll see. So one of the ones I want to pull out here is the entry overlay because the the entry overlay you can actually point to different objects. So in this case, I've kind of put put an image here of say you have five attributes attribute. One can be pointing to an external code table. You can think of a code table as also known as a lookup table. So it's basically a simple array that replaces runtime computation with a simpler array indexing operation. The savings in processing time can significantly can be significant because retrieving a value from memory is often faster than carrying out an expensive computation. Or input output operation. An OCA table is a lookup table that OCA can ingest. So I'll show you a little bit about that during the demo. And finally, this is what's happening. So with the data agreements, I'll leave you to read what they are on the left. Because I think Yan and Lau did a good job of explaining that. But basically, any of the language overlays can basically be swapped out and and back into the stack. So that's how it changes the language. So I'm going to show you in the demo. We currently have English, Dutch, Swedish and Chinese. So I'll show you that during the demo. So there's a few pieces that I I have to bring up. One's an OCA data capture specification, which is an Excel file, which is in a specific structure. That you can put it into our parser and it automatically generates all of the the capture base and the overlays into into JSON files. The same thing for the code tables, those external code tables. So you can kind of think of maybe a table of countries. You can have the countries in English or in our case, Dutch, Swedish or Chinese. It'll point to a code table. Again, that that's that Excel spreadsheet can be passed and JSON files created. The OCA data store is where we're at the moment storing all of the the code table JSON files. And the OCA repositories where restoring all of the schema bases and the overlays in JSON files. And then obviously, I can show you the 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 multi language data agreement form. So what let me so let me stop sharing here and then I will quickly. Oops, I I will bring up my desktop. Okay, so share desktop. Hopefully, you can see my desktop now. So. So what you're seeing in front of you, this is the OCA data capture specification. And in here, our pastor will ignore the read me file. That's that's purely so that you can kind of. Add some information so people know what this spreadsheet is about. So we can start with the main tab here in the in the main tab. At the top, you'll see sorry, the third line though, when it starts with CB, that basically means it's in held in the capture base in the base object. And where it's oh, well, that's an overlay. So in this case, you 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 can name all of your your attribute names. OCA doesn't care what you name, name this, this is an architecture, it's not an ontology. So you can you can name the things like as you wish. An attribute type. So you add your attribute type there. This flagged attribute is where you flag any PII information. And then you've got the rest of the ones here are overlays. So a character setting coding overlay, it's defaulted as UTF eight. But if if you had a strange character encoding for, you know, ancient Hebrew or whatever. You could you could put a different character encoding set there. The format overlay, so kind of fairly typical, if you have an ISO standard that you're following, you can put it in here or if it's a. You know, any date formatting, you can you can add it in here. It's just so that people know what to expect. Has the format entry codes. So there's two kind of entry overlays. One's an entry codes overlay and one's an entry overlay and the entry codes overlay is really the machine readable stuff. And and the entry overlay is for human readable stuff. And within here, I will show you some of these things. So you this is where you can point to an external table. So if I take this. This SAI here for included region. And I pop it into, let me pop it into here. Think it's this one. Yeah, okay, so I'll pop it into the data vault here. Here, great. And so I hit get here. Hopefully, this will work. Get I have to click try it out, which is a bit weird. I don't know why you have to do that. Should just be automatic. And then it's, oh, hang on. Is it not for some reason it does this sometimes when you share your screen, it's not allowing me to put into that. Anyway, it's a it does work. I think this is. Sorry?
Click try out.
Ah, thank you. Thank you. You can see my my tech genius coming in. Great, thanks, Kristoff. Good to have you on the call. And I hit execute and then good. And then here you've got a download file. So if I click that download file. It then goes into my downloads folder. I can open that up. And you get this kind of crazy thing which I can make a little bit more friendly than that by going in here and. Popping it in hopefully. It's really slow. Maybe I'll maybe I have to stick at this.
It both just to keep the demo times. You have two more minutes.
Okay, cool. Yeah. So anyway, you parse the stuff, you can do all that through here. I'll quickly was through the rest of this. You've got, this is where you do all your English language stuff. You've got your Dutch, Swedish and Chinese. And and then we'll we'll pull it into the form. So the other thing I. the other thing I did want to show you was quickly, my God, this is super slow, is this code table. It's the same thing. It's got a readme file, which which the machines don't care about. And then you've got you've got all of the the languages held here in the different tabs. It's it's really slow on my side, so I'm not going to fiddle around with that too much. But what you you guys will be interested in will probably be the the OCA editor. So if I go to OCA editor and I click pick, pick up a zip file. And go to should be here as a file. Yeah, it's right there. This is it file and click upload. The form will automatically resolve from all of all of that input. Sorry, it's quite a lot of information. So here you go. You've got your data agreement. And in here, whenever you, so all of these predefined entries here, these are pulling from from a code table, from a lookup table. So if I kind of change language here to Chinese, the whole form will change to Chinese and all of the the countries will change to Chinese as well. And yeah, that's pretty much it. I mean, the content within here where Yan and I are working really closely together to make sure that we're aligned on all of this stuff, all of the predefined entries, etc. And we're using, as Yan said, we're using the the DPV for things like purpose. So that this, this is all coming from a DPV lookup table. So that that's pretty much it from my end. If you have any questions, etc., you can email me directly. And.
One comment before we go to Jose, one thing that I think is brilliant with what you have done is the vocabulary. When we're implementing the that agreement and getting the same language, multiple language support, it's it's a very good example for us to all follow. So. Yeah, thanks, Paul. Over to you, Prose. All good now? Awesome.
Yeah, can you hear me right?
Yep.
Everything should be good now. Let's hope so. Okay. Are you seeing my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So first of all, hello, everyone. I am Jose. I work at Gataca. And we are also making an effort towards the finding a standard for data agreements. We are pushing Gataca, the V initiative, and the data agreements will be it is one of the three main working packages we're working on. So I will try to make a demonstration first of our current state of the state of implementation, which is where we come from in Gataca, the verifiable consents. And this can show what we try to achieve with the data agreements and and then how how one document will evolve into the other and how everything fits into the V and the standards that verifiers and wallets need to follow. So what we use at Gataca until now were verifiable consents, which is a an independent document. And it's a verifiable document following the like verifiable credentials, verifiable representations, which are following the link data approved standard. And they're independent from the presentation, but they represent a service or the data shared between a user and a service provider in order to obtain a certain digital service. So those, if you can see here, the comparison when on the current application, whenever a presentation is exchanged, it could be that a consent also needs to be exchanged using a parallel but different protocol. So those consents don't contain actually the the claim values. They contain reference to the information, specific reference to the information that has been shared. So it can be known and and follow the the lifecycle of that information. And then I will also, we also use them to enable the usage of pairwise DADs in order to to sign the presentations. I don't want to extend a little bit on this because it's very Gataca specific. But what we, it's something we do in order to make a training enforcement of the consent. And the usage of the credentials is to use a specific DAD, a pairwise DAD only for that relation. And we use that to sign the presentations and to make all the communication between the user and the verifier. And the consent is used is the only proof of relation between the subject DAD, which is present on all the credentials and the holders DAD, which is one, the pairwise relation signing that presentation. So without that valid consent, a verifier could not be able to trust a presentation because he cannot state the relation between the holder signing the presentation and the subject of the credentials present. And so I will go a little bit deeper into the lifecycle and how we use the consent. And knowing that the consent needs only to be shared upon the creation of the first relation between the user and the verifier and with the modifications or the end of the relation with the revocation of the the consent. So that means that it should always reflects the current status and the current data shared between the user and the verifier. So the verifier could modify it by asking a different set of credentials, maybe less, maybe more, or maybe modifying the purpose for which he's using those credentials. And on the other side, the user could be wanting to replace pieces of specific data shared but hold by the verifier in the service or revoke access to some credentials if those credentials were not needed to provide service, but were just optional some cases. And both could at any time end the relation and demand the revocation of the consent. So you can see a little bit the the lifecycle of the consent. And how does DID map into the data agreement? Well, as you have seen, first, you have on the link side, on the left side of the screen, you have the verifiable consent as we use it in Gataca, a simplified version, because it wouldn't fit the whole document, the screen. And on the right side, you have a scheme of the data agreement as wanted to to be proposed on on the current working package on the V. So it has improvements. You you all keep the metadata about the the data agreement ID about the verifier and subject involved. You have a lot of information with all the interesting and advantage shown by Yan before about the relation with DPIs and which could easily lead to enforce GDPR constraints and so on. You can even, you have a lot of, a lot more of legal basis and 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 the policies are stated inside of the the same document. The personal data is still reflects and linked to the purpose, just like it was before. And you have a little more possibility by using the events and knowing which party has performed which operation along the lifecycle of the consent of the data agreement. So this data agreement would fall in as we have explained. It's a different protocol, but it's really tied to the presentation exchange protocol or to whatever presentation exchange we're using. And that's why we are trying to push it on the on the V. The V, as we know, it's it's the verifier universal interface. It's a group of working packages trying to easy the and and to allow any wallet to of any provider to share and exchange information, verifiable credentials with any verifier, even if it's on a different tech stack, just by offering common standards or APIs that could allow to enter different governance frameworks or from other text providers. And one of them, so all those, we also try to coordinate the efforts. So that, for instance, if the data agreement is very tied to the exchange and the conditions of a of a presentation definition, then it could be stated and written, and it's something we are pushing to move also into into this. And I will try to do a little demo, which is, it can be very fast and simple. But are you seeing my screen right? Okay, so I, as a user, will try to, this is the common demo we used to show. I will try to apply for an online cyber security master in this university, which has SSI services and you can use, can work as a verifier. So the configuration of this verifier allow to make a specific presentation request, a presentation definition, and what kind of credentials, and if they're mandatory or not, can be requested to the user. And inside the same presentation definition, we had embedded the request, the purposes for the verifiable consent. So you, for instance, the, I don't know, the birthdate may be used for authentication or for regulation and so on. Those purposes will change and align on the data agreement standard. But those are the the previous existing on the Gataca verifiable consent. And on the wallet side, when the user scans the QR and gets requested the credentials. Okay, he will see under each credential for which purpose or for which purposes, if it's plural, because it could be different. That credential is required. I think it's not very clear on the screen. But yeah, for instance, the document number is used for regulation and the gender is just for application purposes or the academic institution also for for regulation and so on. And yeah, once the user consent, I need to accept all the credentials. Okay, I will use my name. I don't, okay, I don't have all the valid credentials, so I can't consent and I cannot share the the service. But if I did, then the consent document will be stored both the wallet and the verifier and I will always be. Let's see. If it's used on any services, I could always know from the credential in which to which data and which services I have provided access to that credential. And that's everything on our side. And should I give you back the presentation, Jan? Just feel free to ask or send an email.
What would I, yeah, we can go through the the last slide and then we can open up for questions. Thanks, Jose. I think what you've done and the connection between the proof and the consent with the attribute ID makes it very clear what is the the data agreement surrounding the credential information. So what I presume you can see my my screen here. What's interesting presenting to diff is for you to see what we see as new next steps from the NGI ESEF project. And there I've counted five different aspects that need to be looked at. One is looking at the legal and human experience guidelines and requirements. We've been somewhat technical in the in the work we've done, but there might be guidelines needed in order to how do you present this information so that across implementations that they're keeping a a common way of presenting information. The second point is the work we have been doing a lot in our in our last six months is looking at the data model, the lifecycle, what the schema should look like and agreeing with the common vocabulary. And that's a work that will continue. I know that Cantara has been doing work there as well, so we may be communicating with them. And then comes where could be of interest to diff, which is how do we perform then to working over DLT and the proof request and what mechanisms are being used? If there is a DID method for setting up the interworking between two implementers and establishing, we can demonstrate that, yes, we can do interoperability test and also looking at possibly customer having a common API definition. And this is where I end the 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 demo part and on presentation. And I'd like to open up the floor for any questions that people may have or comments. We might spend more time talking within with diff to to see if credentials and claims working group is interested in in working in this area. So I open up the floor for any questions. And thank you for listening in to our our demo. I did see some comments were being made under the chat. And I see there is a hand from Daniel.
Sorry, there was an applause for the well presented.
Oh, it's a pause. Thank you. Or thanks to the whole group. We did have a little lick up here and there, but you know, it's the first time. So I think we we did good. Yeah. There was a comment. I don't know if you saw that what's the usage of of what OCA has done. And Lao, you might want to comment on it as to what is the work that could be done into integration between OCA work and IGRANT. I don't know if Jose wants to comment from Gataca, but you can start. Well. You're muted, so we can't hear you. Famous problem.
So yeah, one fundamental reason why we are in a token data agreement is 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 to ensure that any kind of data exchange or sharing is adhering to the law. And when I talk about law, jurisdiction and the language ability and being able to actually configure in different languages, etc. is is of immense value. And that's that's precisely what we are. We're looking at OZF. Then David, David Chadwick also asked about is there any mobile wallet implementation?
We hear your keyboard.
So when it comes to mobile wallet side, the the advantage is that it must be, at least iOS and Android provides some certain features. What is most important is actually the content. Per se, and as the content actually is supporting the language, which is what OCA does, showing it in a mobile is extremely straightforward, my mind. Because because the metadata within the mobile is iOS and Android suppose natively, all this kind of language translation. So the content is really in a major tricky 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 part is, and that is what also solves us for it. So we don't necessarily have to really support OSA for mobile wallet, per se, as long as we actually make it configurable and supported in the configuration or the the definition progression phase, it's it's good enough to begin.
Thanks, Lao. Jose, did you want to do any reflection on the?
Oh, I mean. Yeah, I I don't have too much comment. We don't support OCA yet and we we are maybe looking forward adopting it. But I I agree that's a common problem with every wallet or implementer.
Thanks.
Yeah, and I can give a bit of a what the what's happening with OCA as well, which might might be useful for people. Is that the first thing to note is that everything within OCA is deterministic. So you know, that's the capture base and all of the overlays. And that's super important because the the one thing obviously with JSON LD is it's heavily steeped in URLs. And within the the linking process of JSON LD, you have this problem with creating forms because you can authenticate the form, but then, you know, a URL, which is kind of underpinning the underlying schema can change the concert, the content behind that URL can change, even though you've authenticated the credential. So it does. So that suddenly brings a security risk with the with with the actual object. So that's that's why we're, that's why we're really pushing OCA is because it defeat, it gets rid of that problem because everything is absolutely deterministic. It doesn't rely on kind of external URLs and stuff like that. But I thought that might be interesting for you guys.
Cool. Thanks, Paul. So Juan, what do you think? Shall we end the call or like the formal recording and then we? If there are no more questions. And then we, if there are no more questions?
I guess so. Give it another minute for questions, come on.
Okay, okay, okay.
Twist their arm a little, come on, people.
Well, maybe if we go, so not recorded, then it's, maybe they speak, you know.
Let me, let me make a comment. This is my first time attending this meeting. I I work for, I work for identity.com, my name is William. And, you know, it's it's amazing to experience what the rest of the world sees outside of the world I've been working in for a while now. And this is incredible, like you guys have opened my mind up in ways I I don't even know. I've got like two, three pages of writing that I took down in this meeting. I really appreciate the efforts that you guys are doing. And yeah, I just want to say thank you. This has been very, very cool.
Awesome. You're welcome to participate with further discussions. I mean, you're always welcome.
I'm glad you guys are stuck with me now.
Where are you based, by the way?
I'm in Cape, South Africa.
South Africa, oh.
Yeah, but yeah, this is incredible. Like this venture identity has been something I've been obsessed about for, since I've discovered blockchain. Every blockchain project that tried to do fell apart because of lack of identity on chain. And, you know, and, you know, this, this was a very, very cool first time experience working with you or hearing what you guys are doing.
Yeah, and what we're trying to do is add the provenance surrounding the data exchange. You can't treat them separately. Verifiable credentials is awesome. I mean, I can prove, oh, here is my identity, I have, I don't have COVID and so forth. But you don't know how the business is going to use that information. That's why that little receipt, being able to say, oh, this is how you're using my information is key in my, in my opinion. And that's my standardization work and ISO, I'm the co-editor of twenty seven five sixty, is the regulators that are looking at, let's make it official. Let's, let's have that, you need to support these records. So there are discussions, both in ISO regulators and within Europe of of maybe requiring these these records or these data agreements.
So I look forward, I look forward to spending more time with you guys.
Okay, great, thanks. Was that enough twisting, John?
I did want to ask Jose, oh, sorry, Martin has a question, maybe.
That.
Yeah, hi, Martin, also from identity.com. From the presentation point of view, what I've seen in the I Grant demo around sharing a credential and in the Gataca demo was very similar from the use case that was shown, but I didn't understand the technical differentiation. So especially, are you using the same kind of mechanism, I Grant? Like P E or V U I? Or what are the similarities in the credential and data agreement exchange protocol?
Okay, I may, I may answer this. Right now, we have worked towards sharing a common data model. The presentation exchange protocol from I Grant and from Gataca are not the same. So we are, we have different opinions or experience in order to to maze it into a specific exchange protocol. I think I grant you is using hyperlayer A R Is and DID come for for the standards and and protocols for for exchange of credentials. While in Gataca, we had first our proprietary exchange protocol, well, our, at least our own implementation. And now we're trying to implement the DIF presentation exchange over the A D S I O P version two. And the, so what we are trying to see also in the standards is to know how to fit that presentation definition or inside the presentation definition or inside, or maybe along the the presentation exchange. And that's only Gataca's point of view. I'm, I don't want to talk about, over I Granters here. But yeah, how to to include the data agreement and the different processes and statuses and and errors caused by the data agreement inside or together with the exchange protocol. With, in our case, with the A D S I O P and the DIF presentation exchange.
If.
Could I make a comment on that?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
I think that's really interesting, what you said, Jose, because I'm, I'm, I'm working in the a bit with the DIF presentation exchange people and also inside the Y D C group for transferring the DIF P in the protocol. That story, Mitch. And basically, the the point I'm making is that the the actual specification of the of the policy, which is DIF P and and your privacy stuff should be flexible and and shouldn't be sort of hardcoded in because we don't know what new requirements other people will have. You've just brought a new requirement along, which is privacy protection, basically, and and adding that into requesting verifiable credentials. And I don't believe we can expect everybody to agree on one standard for everything. But different groups will have their own way of specifying different things. And therefore, the the protocol like DIDCOM or O I D C should allow people to put their own policies in there so they can actually add the extra feature they want. So you would be able to add your privacy protection along with DIF P, if O I D C allowed it. I don't know what you think about that.
If I can comment on that, if you saw, one of the activities is a data model and lifecycle, which is somewhat independent of the underlying technology, then it's the the stack that you would implement. So the activity would be done at two levels.
Exactly, that's.
And what I think could be good with DIF is that there is an activity defining that that stack part. There might be two implementations, but there is a concerted effort to define and and see that the same functionality. We might in the future even look at interoperability between the stacks. I mean, just like interledger support. But I agree that we shouldn't be only on one ledger.
I I agree, and I think in that layering as well, the the management layer of specifying very public credentials, what you require in the policy, that goes above the protocol layer. So the protocol layer, which could be DIDCOM or or O I D C, is the la- is the layer in which you carry the requirements. But the layer above the management layer is where you specify the requirements to be carried in the protocol layer.
Right.
Yeah, but if you actually hard bake the two layers together, you you're you're making the thing too inflexible, too brittle.
Yeah, and I think we've done a pretty good job with all the projects as to create a base schema of how we interpret. We need to iron out some more details, but there's an effort. Plus, we have a standard that we can refer to, if that's Cantara or ISO.
Yeah.
So I don't know if others want to comment on that.
Yeah, I was going to say to David also that with with O C A, because you can get your your entries can be can be piped to an external table. So for instance, something like, you know, region or something. At the moment, we're using G I X as our main, not region, sorry, industry sector. We're using G I X codes. But if you wanted to, you know, build a lookup table for for any of the other ones, sick or whatever, like you you could definitely do that. We're we're not, you know, certainly with O C A, we're not forcing people to use those things. So O C A has the flexibility to be, to be able to kind of chop, you know, chop things into the stack as you wish. But I think we we probably, but with the data agreement, I think we do need to come up with like a a core capture base. Everything else is is up for grabs, but I think the capture base needs to be stable. Yeah.
Lau, did you want to say something?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to answer back to Martin, who asked a question, what stack were we on? So we are, essentially, we are built on top of, you know, whatever chat you're putting, is exactly what we have. The Aries protocol with DIDCOM. And what we did is we use the decorator protocol to add the data agreement during a presentation exchange. So.
I mean, I.
The data agreement is self.
I would now be interested who had the easier experience of bringing the data agreement parts into an existing protocol.
Yeah, so so. If you're, if you're actually on an existing protocol, what we also did is that we we added a plugin. So you can, if you have like areas, you can just install, when you're starting there is instance, you actually just add protocol, add this plugin in, and it automatically takes everything on board. And the whole, so it's it's completely hidden from the implementation part of you. So if you're a developer, profit it, just get it free, basically. So that's, that's how it works today.
And I, and I think I would also say that figuring out how these kinds of consent receipts, GDPR receipts, all of these sorts of policy, I I think David's right to call them sort of policy metadata that needs to sort of be negotiated along with any presentation exchange or issuance flow. I think we need to figure out how to get that into presentation exchange in a way that works across everything, like the fact that like Wacky PEX is good. Like when it, when, if someone's using, you know, the the latest final, when DIDCOM V two is definitively two point zero, that will sort of cement how you get the presentation objects back and forth. But I'm with David that we have to make sure it's flexible enough that it works across all these use cases, across multiple protocols. Because we already have here running code prototypes, you know, in some cases, production implementations, exchanging presentation exchange objects. And if we can't make it work with presentation, we need to speak up soon before presentation V two gets finalized and say, you know, this needs to be optional, this needs to be extensible, like we need the extension points hammered out with all of these sort of inputs.
Yeah, I I agree, yeah, Juan. That's why, in fact, I mean, that, one of the main goals in in VUI and in practice, try to coordinate these efforts and there, and if we detect some working package or some part of the resolution or the verification on on the credentials, that's not clearly implemented or easily to do outside your tech stack. We're trying to to find this and and help the the interaction and the the influence in in the other one, in, yeah, in the other standard.
Absolutely.
What we could do is we can discuss, Juan, about setting up a project to do this effort. And then we could set some milestones of the effort to to figure out initially the use cases and the flexibility that we need to have. And then we can review then the the presentation proof. And and so we know what requirements might be influencing what what might change so that we don't go too directly on the implementation without understanding. Okay, these are the requirements.
Yeah, 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 documenting that would be immensely. It would make very objective the request to presentation exchange. We we could, if if you can't point to the whole thing, use case requirement, exact line of the protocol that, yeah.
There will be probably multiple forums being used to to discuss these requirements. Because I don't see DIF being the experts on the legal and human experience possibly. So you might be using my data, for example, for one part, Mike Cantara for another. And then I'll be there for the standards input. Because the the standards needs a clear implementation ideas of what could influence, and I'm trying to cover that under this project.
Absolutely.
So, great, I've seen that we've lost most people.
But we rolled the hour six minutes ago.
Yeah, I know, it's, but it's great that some people did. The stragglers hung out here on a Friday for some of us, getting late for some, yeah.
Well, great, thanks, 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 Jan, for putting this together, for herding cats and and directing traffic and M C and for making this happen. This is all great work and it's a welcome addition to the to the archive here.